Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via live stream on Facebook and Twitter. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner's website. To all participating in the meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill. Absent. Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares. Commissioner President Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and have lost lives to COVID-19 virus and for the tragic killings of innocent people in Atlanta, Georgia, and Boulder, Colorado, let us pause for Thank you. I have before me certification from the Clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Now, let's move to public comment. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the Clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so that they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic devices on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you'll have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our Public Information Officer, will begin our public session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do have a caller. The caller is Mike Kevey. Mr. Kevey, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin now. One more time, Mr. Kevey. Okay, we have another caller. We have Mary Rizzo. Ms. Rizzo, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
You can hear me?
Yes, you can say it again.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. The other caller seems like no one could hear him. So, my name is Mary Rizzo. I'm calling from Newark, New Jersey, and I'm speaking to Agenda Item J2, the resolution regarding the budget. I have spoken before the freeholders, the commissioners, excuse me, many times before. I'm here again to talk about ending your contract with ICE. And this obviously is important with regards to the budget because so much of the county's budget is coming from the detention of immigrants at your jail. I also would like to demand that President Richardson meet with abolitionist organizations to discuss the issue of the ICE contract. We've heard from President Richardson that he's willing to meet with organizations, but that has not happened yet. So, I would really encourage President Richardson to meet with our organizations to really think about this from this abolitionist perspective. I also wanted to let the commissioners know, if you haven't been following the news out of Howard County, Maryland, that their county commissioners recently, in the last, just the last week or so, ended their contract with ICE. And this was a contract that they had with ICE, much like yours, that had been in effect for more than 20 years to hold detainees at their county jail. And they just sent, just ended that contract in the face of pressure by activists and also their realization that their county should not be profiting from ICE detention. And I'd be happy to send you information about this event and the ending of this contract because I think that it is a model for what you all can do. You've seen another body just like yours do this in a state very much like New Jersey. So, I think that this is an important model for you to understand that this is possible. Secondly, I just want to remind you all that this past winter, so just a couple of months ago, dozens of people went on hunger strike at the Essex County Correctional Facility. And they did this to protest the unsanitary conditions at your jail, the inadequate medical care, the punitive use of lockdown, and intimidation by guards. And in fact, one striker who was on hunger strike in December of 2020 said, "We're fighting because I want to stay in this country with my children where I've lived for so long and which I consider my home. We're sacrificing our bodies. I am showing them that my life is worthless if I don't have my family." And those words, I think, just kind of sum up the position that you are putting these detainees in. They are willing to sacrifice their own bodies and health to show you that detention in your facility is wrong and that there is no way to make your facility appropriate and humane because the very act of detaining these people is wrong. The only moral thing to do is for you to end your contract with ICE. So, to wrap up, President Richardson, I implore you to please meet with abolitionist organizations to discuss this issue and to hear from the voices of immigrants who also agree that this contract should be ended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller, we're going to try to bring back Mr. Kevey again. Mr. Kevey, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin. Mr. Kevey, are you there? One more time, Mr. Kevey, can you hear us? Hello? All right. We'll move on. The next speaker is Mr. Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
We accessible meeting. But in the hopes that you can hear me, my name is Whitney Strube. I'm with North Jersey Democratic Socialists of America, and I am calling about the ICE contract that is part of your budget, which even Senator Bob Menendez now calls blood money. Cory Booker is against it. Menendez is against it. Every activist organization is against it. You know, and yet you persist in this cruel and inhumane system. And what I mostly want to speak to is a response that I got today from the commissioners. I had asked at the last meeting about Essex County's disproportionate collaboration with ICE as shown in Attorney General Graywall's report on compliance with the Immigrant Trust Directive. Essex County collaborates with ICE more than all other counties in New Jersey combined. We know that. And the response I got from you today is, "We believe the numbers reported are skewed against Essex County." That's exactly the point, though. Of course, they're skewed against Essex County because you're collaborating with ICE and you have a financial incentive to facilitate its detention and deportation work. And so, I want to ask further questions about that. The categories that you're collaborating with ICE on, they seem to me to be volitional and they seem to be based not on anything specific to Essex County so much as your financial incentive to feed people into ICE's clutches. So, one of the categories that you collaborate with ICE on is providing notice to ICE of a detained individual's upcoming release. As far as I understand that, that means you're just turning people over from the jail to ICE so that they can bounce back to the jail so that you can get money from ICE. Another category is continued detention for ICE of a detained individual past the time otherwise eligible for release. Again, it seems to me, once again, that the key factor here is your financial incentive in holding these people so that ICE can grab them and put them back in your jail in the detention wing. And this is very frustrating. I mean, I don't understand how you could possibly try to justify this. And then, so I ask again, for the record, and I would like a written response, why are you doing this? Why are you providing ICE this access that you do not have to provide it, which you are doing willingly and for which you have a financial incentive? And maybe that's the question. Is it simply because of the financial incentive? Do you believe this is just? I have no idea, but I do feel like you owe it to us to explain why you're doing this. And you also didn't answer the question I had previously asked, which is whether there have been measures taken to curtail this volitional collaboration with ICE. I asked that last time, did not get a response. And so, I ask it again. Have you taken any actions to curtail this active and volitional collaboration with ICE? Are there any plans to implement measures to curtail it? Or is the plan to just keep handing people over, keep making money, and shrugging and saying, "Well, it used to be Trump, now it's Biden. There's nothing we can do. Our hands are tied. It's just a miracle of nature that we sit here feeding people into our jail for money for ICE's detention machine." Yeah, you owe it to us, to the public, to explain this. So, please give me another written response that actually engages with this topic, explains it, and answers my questions, and end the ICE contract.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Dragon. Mr. Dragon, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Matt Dragon, West Orange, requesting responses. With regard to transparency on the Rescue Act and over $140 million coming to the county, number one, how will the public know when, where, and how this money is being spent and when, you know, when it's all spent, what project it's used on, et cetera? Two, what is the current excess expenses incurred due to COVID that has not already been paid or can be paid using existing federal or state COVID-specific funding? Number three, what's stopping this money from offsetting our ICE contract money and ending the contract? And on the topic of ICE, we've heard there's an ongoing hunger strike among prisoners of ICE at ECFC. So, number four, what is the current number of prisoners on hunger strike? Number five, how long have they been on hunger strike and how many meals have they missed? And number six, to the prior speaker's question, can you please provide details of how, in precise terms, the AG's reports' numbers are somehow skewed against Essex County? And number seven, why do you believe it was skewed and who are you accusing of skewing those numbers? Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next caller, once again, Mike Kevey. Mr. Kevey, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Kevey, you are on. You may begin speaking.
All right. I'm attempting to speak. This is the third time. I'll start again.
We can hear you.
My name... You can hear me? Can the commissioners hear me? I appreciate that. Thank you. My name is Mike Kevey. I'm the Vice President of State and Federal Programs at RWJ Barnabas Health and have the privilege to be representing Newark Beth Israel Medical Center, Community Medical Center, and St. Barnabas Medical Center. And I'm calling this afternoon to express our support for ordinance number three that you'll be speaking about later this afternoon. This is a valuable program to the hospitals in the county, to the county itself, and to the residents in our county. It provides a very unique opportunity for the county to draw down additional federal dollars to help support the hospitals to bridge the gap that exists currently between the cost of providing care to Medicaid and uninsured and the rates that the Medicaid program is able to pay. We're very supportive of the process to date. We're pleased with the progress that the county has made and want to certainly thank the leadership within the county for being very inclusive in the partnership with the counties. So, it was a short note to express our support that this continues to move forward, and we're all hoping for an effective date in the beginning of the summer. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry, I was muted. Madam Clerk, we do not have any callers waiting to speak.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, we have one email for a public comment regarding Agenda Item, and this is from Jeffrey Feld, Esquire of Short Hills, New Jersey. Board of Commissioners, regarding Essex County Board of Commissioners, March 24, 2021, virtual meeting, J dot two, calendar year 2021, Budget Resolution 2021 dash one zero, one six zero. Other repetitive non-agenda items matter of public importance. Dear Essex County Board of Commissioners, I respectfully request that this letter be included in the March 24, 2021 official virtual meeting. I respectfully request confirmation and receipt of and distribution of this letter and all exhibits to all commissioners and their council prior to the virtual meeting. Debate on bill should be a partisan process that takes into account all views of all Americans, not just those of one political party. Arizona Senator Christian Sinema. Because our silence is complicity, we cannot be complicit. We have to speak out. We have to act. President Joseph Biden, March 19, 2021. But this political segregation is awful for Americans. It's getting worse. We're separating into two worlds, and that's bound to deepen the distrust across political divide, just as racial segregation deepens the racial divide. Tom Moran, op-ed. This political divide is awful for Americans and is getting worse. The Sunday Star-Ledger, March 21, 2021. The government has a basic obligation to enforce the law and to crack down on this epidemic of tax fraud. Editorial, How to Collect Unpaid Taxes. The Sunday, New York Times, March 21, 2021. As George Conway, a lawyer and Trump critic married to the former president advisor Kellyanne Conway, put it, "For Trump, the law is equatorial. For Vance, it's what holds us together is the civilization, and that's why people who thumb their nose at it have to be prosecuted. If there aren't, you're taking a big step towards a world where it's acceptable." Jane Meyer, Trump is in the crosshairs. Will Cyrus Vance Jr. indict the former president for financial crimes? The New Yorker, March 22, 2021. This letter incorporates and supplements all my earlier unanswered written questions and comments to the Board of Commissioners. I reserve my right to supplement these March 24, 2021 virtual meeting comments and questions. Our state model is liberty and prosperity. Liberty requires accountability. Liberty requires robust and informed participation. Liberty requires responses to pertinent written and oral questions. Liberty requires moral courage. Liberty is never being too sure you're right. This is a very fluid situation. This memo assumes constructive and actual knowledge of certain post-March 10, 2021 ECBOC meeting developments, the 154 million, 154 million 960,000 American Relief Act award to the county, the Volomelous Woodmount Bad Faith Fair Share Litigation pleading file March 16 against the township of Milburn, all post-March 10, 2021 ECBOC meeting posted. Third Circuit, State Supreme Court, and Appellate Division, relevant opinions, New Jersey US Attorney press releases, New Jersey general press releases, New Jersey comptroller press releases, EDPA US Attorney press releases, Star Ledger articles, editorials, op-eds, public notices, the New York Times articles, editorials, and op-ed, Milburn item articles and public notices, New Jersey Globe and New Jersey Insider public website articles, New Jersey Law Journal editorials, opinion pieces, articles, and case summaries. This memo assumes constructive and actual notice of the Yiddish phrase, "Best Hurt" and "Minch." This memo assumes constructive and actual notice of our governor-state Supreme Court nomination of Rachel Apter and the current Director of New Jersey Division of Civil Rights, a former Ruth Bader Ginsburg law clerk and ACLU staff attorney. This is, three minutes have now been used to read this public comment. The balance of this public comment will be entered into the record in its full content and extent. Mr. President, that includes our public comments for this public comment session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And please ensure that this information is relayed to the administration for an appropriate response. The comments directed towards me will be answered.
Yes, Mr. President, as is our policy and practice, all public comments will be responded to in writing.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance of first reading. I'm sorry, Mr. President, there are none.
Do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, there are three. Resolution number R 2021 dash 00159 and 00160, and ordinance number O dash 2021 dash 00005. However, Mr. Paul Alvekio has some comments regarding Resolutions R dash 2021 dash 00159 and 00160.
Mr. Paul Alvekio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Before giving a second reading on these two budget-related resolutions, that's 159 and 160, we learned earlier today that there are some items that need to be discussed regarding the state's review of budget. And ultimately, what my recommendation will be is that we adjourn these two resolutions, we take a motion to adjourn the two resolutions to the meeting of April 7. But I think it's important we give the administration an opportunity to speak to those two issues concerning the further passage of the 2021 county budget.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Paul Alvekio. I'm going to ask Annette de Blasio from our Finance Department to address these two items.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. This is Annette de Blasio from the Office of Management and Budget to provide some further information to the Board. The New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, the Division of Local Government Services, which is the state authority charged with assessing and approving our annual government budget, launched a new electronic financial automation submission and tracking system known as the FAST for the calendar year 2021. The 2021 introduced County of Essex budget was uploaded on or about March 1, and with this process being new, it has stepped back our timeline to have the County of Essex 2021 budget to be voted on tonight. The Office of Management and Budget has submitted a two-month extension to our temporary budget for April through May in order to address the electronic issues generated by the FAST And that concludes our statement from the Office of Management and Budget.
And that is for both resolutions?
That's correct.
159 and 00160? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Paul Alvekio, we need to have a motion to move these resolutions to April 7th, is that correct?
Right. And I would, yeah, it's a motion to adjourn them, and I would do them individually, Mr. President, take them separately. A motion to adjourn the second reading to the meeting of April 7. And then, once we're complete with the ordinance, the ordinance, we can take the added starter number 33, which is the amendment to the temporary budget. number 33, which is the amendment to the temporary budget. We can take that as a resolution. But first things first, yeah, on 159, it would be a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Johnston to adjourn R dash 2021 dash 00159?
Yes, to the meeting of April 7.
To April 7. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. President, Commissioner Gill has joined us. Roll call. Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for R dash 2021 dash 00160, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Vice President Pumares to adjourn this item until the April 7 meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public hearing on ordinance. Yes.
I believe, Mr. President, our counselors suggested we go to ordinance number?
No, no, go with the ordinance, that's up next.
I see. Okay.
And then, once we get into resolutions, we'll take the added starter.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Sorry. It's O dash 2021 dash 00005. I hereby declare a public hearing on this ordinance, O dash 2021 00005 open. If there is any member of the public who emailed comments for or against this ordinance, we'll read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing, or if there are any callers in the queue, let the record. Madam Clerk.
There. I'm going to reach out to our Public Information Officer, Charlo Malumbu. Do we have any callers in the queue?
We do have a caller in the queue, Madam Clerk. I will put them through now. The caller's name is Mei Ling Montana, it looks like, sorry if I mispronounced that. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin. You are on Mei Ling Montana, you may begin speaking.
Madam Clerk, can we just clarify that this is to speak on the ordinance that's up right now?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make a comment about the budget for the, for the Isopanian Center, if that is possible?
Now's not the time for that. This, we're on an ordinance for this hospital to be filed for.
Excuse me?
Yeah, Charlo, now, we're on to a different ordinance.
Miss Montana, this is another, you have to call back to speak on that during the public comment session at the end of the meeting. This is for, this is part of the ordinance. You cannot speak on that at this time. You can hang up and call back.
Okay.
Okay, we can continue. Sorry.
Are there any other callers?
Charlo, do we have any other callers?
There are no callers for this one.
All right, Mr. President, there are none.
Thank you very much. Mr. McInerney, any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Paul Alvechio.
No, no, Mr. President.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pumares and a second from Commissioner Siebel to close, close the public hearing on ordinance O dash 2021 dash 00005. I have the same. Yes.
Mr. President, if I may, I don't know, is Frank Delguardo on the line?
Yeah, I am here, Mr. President, I'm present.
Yeah, I just, you know, is, is, this is the topic we've been discussing, Frank?
If you're Mr. President, that's correct.
Okay, so, I, I think it's, I think the board needs to be at least updated on, on where we are with this. I'm sorry, I, I kind of lost my place, to be very honest with you on the agenda, but I think we, the board needs to be updated on this because we did have, at least I participated in two, two conference calls over the last couple Mondays, and, you know, what this does for the Sis County hospitals, and I know we, we had a brief outline of it the last time, but there's been some updates. And Frank, do you mind updating the, you know, the board on it?
Yeah, again, Frank Delguardo, Director of Department of Health and Rehabilitation for the county. Per Mr. McInerney's question, what has happened is we're currently negotiating with the state and their financial consultants over a intergovernmental transfer agreement. So there was some language in that agreement that we were going back and forth on trying to negotiate in good faith with the state and on behalf of our hospitals, and we have made significant progress in that area. The, the main issue we had is the hospitals are being assessed this fee, they do need to lay out millions of dollars in order to start this process moving. So with that, the state had initially indicated in our transfer agreement that it would take 45 days for the money to get back to the hospital. So having that money laid out for that period of time, we were contesting that it was not acceptable. So the state has reconsidered, and the caller earlier, Mr. Kiwi, was instrumental in that, in getting that number cut down to 30 days. It all has to do with how the state operates, kind of how the county operates on vendor payments every two weeks. The state does need that 14, 15 days initially, and then they will revise their agreements with the managed care organizations in order to expedite the payments. So that's where we are right now. That agreement will be brought to the board once we finalize. So I imagine sometime next week, that agreement, which is a lengthy, very detailed transfer agreement, will be brought to the board for approval to allow us to allocate the funding, the funds collected to the state and to initiate the payments to the hospitals.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. McInerney.
So, again, just to dovetail what Frank said, there was this program where the hospitals, Sis County hospitals lay out approximately $80 million in quarterly payments in the first year and are to receive $180 million approximately back, obviously an estimated amount, but there's this, this differential of $100 million of additional Medicaid that will inure to these Sis County hospitals. So this, this is a, this is a big chunk of money. Frank's put, and the consultants have put a lot of effort into this. This, we, we, we did discuss this whole idea about those gap of time, and one of the issues in the contract, and Frank, I'm going to ask you where this is at, it, it was 45 days, and in that particular term of the contract, it used the term best efforts for 45 days. Has that changed when it's now 30 days?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank Delguardo, Director of Health and Rehab for the county. Right now, we will submit to the state revised language on that. I, I do believe that language will be removed. We want it to say shall rather than best effort, and I'll have an update for that in the final agreement. That's something we're still working on.
Okay. Excellent. So, so again, this is something that definitely benefits the hospitals within the borders of, of Sis County, and in addition, the monies do run through the county, and there are significant administrative fees that also inure to the County of Essex as, as, you know, revenues, which my understanding, Frank approximates, approximates in the first year an estimated $7 million. Is that correct?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, that, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, Frank, I have to say that, you know, amount of effort that you've put into this that I became aware of is extraordinary, and I think it's a great job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? All right, and we already have a motion from Vice President Pumares and a second from Commissioner Siebel to close the public hearing on ordinance O dash 2021 dash 00005. Do I have the same mover and second to approve ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. Paul Alvechio, you had a suggestion that we should go where?
Yes, Mr. President, to take the added starter number 32, which is an amendment to the temporary budget, so we can get that in place and move on from there. So that would be 30, I think it's 30.
And that would be what?
Number 33.
So we have, we, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Yes, it is 33, Mr. President.
Do you want to read it to record at a later time?
If you so choose, Mr. President.
Yeah, I don't.
I can read it now if you, if you prefer.
Please.
Resolution number 33, Department of Administration and Finance, Office of Management and Budget, emergency to the 2021 temporary appropriation, two-month extension, April through May.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. de Blasio, would you want to comment on this?
Yes, again, good evening, Annette de Blasio, Office of Management and Budget. Due to the electronic issues, which I explained prior, the Office of Management and Budget is putting forth a two-month extension, which will provide funding for the month of April and May, and there is a matrix that is attached to the resolution, which will identify the specific salary and wages and other expenses.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is all as a result of the, some of the concerns about the budget that came through state, although I've looked at the comments from the state, and I, you know, I can't, a lot of bills deal with debt service. Some of the issues with regard to revenue, I think, are, are dealing with the 2020 budget as opposed to anything with the 2021. So it's highly likely that there may not be a change to 2021 budget, but until those comments are resolved, it's best to forestall the, the adoption of the budget and thereby require us to do this addition to the temporary budget for two months.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Alvechio.
I don't have any comments.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number one. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The executive director of the ECIA, Mr. Rother, are here, and also their bond counsel, Mr. Quinn, to address this item.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you, Mr. Rother.
Yeah, okay. Well, this, this, this is a, a housing, a housing project, which bond counsel, who's on the line here with us, can best describe for you for NJIT, and it's, it's one that our staff and our bond counsel have been working as issuance counsel in this, in this matter, and we have approved it yesterday at the ECIA board meeting. It's, it's a, it's a very large project, one of the largest ones that we have done in quite a while, and NJIT will be paying the standard fees to ECIA for the issuance of these bonds, but I, I would pass this back to bond counsel for description of the project in more detail.
Is he with, is he with us?
We can't hear you, Mr. Quinn.
Ted, he was.
He's on.
Oh.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn, we can hear you. Steve, if you can't, Steve, if you can't get, if Kevin can't get through, you're going to have to steer the ship on this.
I, I don't have the details here in, in front of me.
Mr. President? Mr. McInerney.
Mr. Rother, just can you confirm, just simply, this is strictly conduit financing, correct?
Purely conduit financing, yes.
So there is no guarantee by the county, there's no liability to the county or to the ECIA with regard to?
That's right.
Okay. And ECIA will get its traditional administration fee that it, it does on all these similar type.
The closing, yeah, the closing fee and the administration fee over time, the, the initial. Um, the, the initial fee is, uh, point one two five percent of, of the bond issue. The administration fee is an ongoing fee of point one oh percent of the outstanding balance. Uh, and all of our costs are being picked up as well.
And, and what is, what is the total amount of financing on this? What's the total bond issue?
It, I, I, that, I, I was relying on bond counsel to come up with those numbers. It's north of, it's north of 90 million. It's one of the largest transactions we've done.
It is one of the largest, but, but we did a hundred million dollars with COVID, not COVID.
Yep. It's a hundred and ten million, Mr. McInerney.
Hundred and ten million dollars with the.
Yeah, but this is, yeah, but this.
So it's similar to this, if not exact, in terms of.
Yeah, yeah.
Liability. I just called in. I don't know if you can hear me. I called in through my cell phone now. Can you hear me? Kevin Quinn?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not sure what happened with the other phone.
I think the word I was looking for, Mr. Rother, was, was it Consanta? With regard to the last one we did for a hundred, uh, you know, larger than this?
The, the only one that I'm recalling that's larger than this was the, was the, uh, the Stewart work that we did for Newark.
Okay, that was 120 million. You're, you're, you're right. And there were one for the Resource Recovery Facility.
Yep.
So a hundred million. Okay, so, so we've handled these before and again, they present no liability to the county.
None, none whatsoever.
And, and, and we need bond counsel to just confirm that.
Yes, that is correct. So this is fully supported by a general obligation lease payment from NJI to T to the borrower. So it's structured, um, as a loan to the borrowing entity, which will use the proceeds of the bonds to, uh, finance the cost of the facility. Um, upon completion, that the facility will be leased to NJIT. Uh, the lease payments from NJIT are general obligations of NJIT and will be, and the base rent is in an amount sufficient to, um, pay debt service on the bond. Um, the project does revert to NJIT, um, at the end of the, um, bond term or, or to the extent that it would be redeemed prior to that as well. But there is no county guarantee or charge on the county credit.
Through you, Mr. President. Would the speaker please put your name and, and, and position on the, the record?
Yeah, yeah, this is Kevin Quinn with McCarter in English. We are bond counsel to the Essex County Improvement Authority.
And, and Kevin, uh.
And Kevin, if, if you would give them, give them the full amount of the tax exempt bond issue and the taxable bond.
Yeah, so if there, the, the ECIA's bond resolution authorizes the bonds to be issued in an aggregate principal amount, not to exceed 110 million. It's anticipated, um, that the taxable piece will be approximately six million, uh, with the remainder, um, being, uh, taxed again.
And, and what's the advantage to NJIT about running the bonds, these bonds to the ECIA?
It's a, it's a conduit issuance and they're, they're taking advantage of the, um, the borrower's expertise in developing the project.
So the ECIA will be involved in the actual development of the project?
I'm sorry, the, the borrower being CHF, which, uh, is collegiate, they're a single-member, uh, limited liability company or sole member liability company, sole member is Collegiate Housing Foundation, which has expertise throughout the country at developing these projects.
But, but what, what does that have to do, what do they have to do with the ECIA?
They, they're the borrower of the proceeds.
So going through the county, not to NJIT, but to the developer?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, the proceeds, gi- gi- give me the flow of the proceeds.
The proceeds.
The sales of bonds?
The proceeds of the bonds will be loaned to CHF Newark LLC pursuant to a loan agreement from the authority, between the authority and the borrower. They'll use those proceeds to develop and finance the construction of the project. And then upon completion, they, they, there's a facility lease pursuant to which they lease the full facility to NJIT.
So this is, if the funds flow through this, this other consulting entity, this development entity.
Correct, correct.
And. And they have no liability for the, for the bonds as well?
They, their liability is, is, um, with respect to their lease payments that, uh, that come through. So it's the general obligation lease payment, which they assign to the trustee for the bond that serviced the bond.
But again, the, the developer who's getting the proceeds of the bond before NJIT, they are not liable for these bonds?
They're, they're liable in the sense of, of pledging their lease payment, not separately liable.
The, the lease payment.
It's the revenue. Yeah.
So the lease payments come from NJ, I'm just trying to understand this because this, there's a little. It goes from NJIT to the developer, back to the ECIA to pay the bonds?
In, in a sense, but it's, it's, it's assigned to a trustee. So the lease payments, um, are pursuant of a facility lease. Um, they're, they'll be paid directly to the bond trustee for payment of the bond.
Right, but from a legal standpoint, the flow is.
Yeah. Correct, correct. So NJIT operates the project, receives the revenues, um, from the project. Um, and it's a general, it's just a general obligation lease of NJIT.
And, and again, I don't want to prolong, but I, I do have to ask this. What was the advantage? Why wouldn't NJIT just borrow the funds?
They could. They were, um, my understanding, Steve, you may have a better understanding of, of how this developed, but they were, they were pursuing, uh, two pathways. One was a, a project financing, um, or more of a project financing. Um, and it, it flipped more to this being the general obligation of NJIT. Um, and they proceeded, they're dual tracking it and proceeded it, uh, down this pathway.
Is it stuff, is, does it have something to do with the way NJIT has to record the bonds or doesn't have to record the bonds?
No, it's, it's, it is under, it's a credit, it's under credit. So it doesn't, doesn't, yeah.
And so, and so the ECIA was used because it was going through this conduit of the development company?
Correct.
And without, without the ECIA, that conduit company would not be able to borrow these funds?
They couldn't on their own borrow the funds, that's correct.
Okay, that's good, that's good. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Quinn.
Sorry for the, the confusion with the phone earlier. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio.
Yeah, just one question. I think we discussed during leadership, um, that this project is solely a student housing project. Is that correct? That that's the only thing?
Yep. That's correct. Dedicated, it's dedicated to students, um, and faculty.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't for some other private.
Not for, no, there, there is a, a parking component and a very small retail component of it. But the, again, it's, it's, it's the, the residents of the facility will be students, students and faculty.
It's ancillary to the, to the primary use of the student housing, right?
That's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Commissioner Sebel.
When Newark borrowed money for the lead pipes from ECIA, the interest rate was very low because of the county's position for bond rating. Will the same thing hold true here for NJIT? Will the interest rate be low for all the money they are getting?
No, no, no. The county, the county is, is.
Your name on the record, your name for the record, please.
Steve, Steve Rother, Steve, Steve Rother, the executive director of the ECIA. No, there is no county guarantee here. That, that, that's what was done in the Newark transaction in order to reduce, uh, the interest rate. That is not being done in this case.
So how does it change? What happens? The interest rate is higher?
No, it's, it's, the, the rate is dependent upon what the, uh, the rating agencies are going to, uh, uh, apply to this transaction.
All right, I understand.
And there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee from the county to affect that.
I understand, thank you. And Newark was a different situation.
Yes.
All right.
Vice President Palmaras, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we did discuss this at leadership and for some reason it seemed to go a lot smoother in describing what this is all about. I would like to just to confirm with the bond counsel that of course doesn't put, uh, our credit rating on a hook, number one. And number two, would, uh, in the event that NJIT defaults for whatever reason, what impact does it have to us?
So, so it, it does not impact, there is, there is not a, as Steve mentioned, any type of guarantee or credit pledge of the county. So it's solely the NJIT's credit. Um, and there, there, there would be no impact from a default scenario. Um, it's their special limited obligations of ECIA payable solely from the loan repayment obligations, which are, which in turn are payable solely from the, uh, the lease payment of NJIT. So it doesn't, it would not impact the county, um, in any manner.
Thank you.
And it would not impact, nor would it, nor, this is Steve Rother again, nor would it impact ECIA.
Correct.
Okay. Great. May I, may I make a recommendation here for the next time the ECIA comes to the board, uh, perhaps rehearse the presentation or something of this magnitude a little bit better? Because had we been up, been able to get bond counsel back on the line, I suspect that we would not have been in a very good position. And so we spent a lot of time here. This did go a lot smoother in leadership and I'd like to make that strong recommendation for the next time you come back. If there's any questions.
No, I, no, no, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry about that, but I, I had a health issue earlier today where I had to run up to a physician and I'm sitting here now with this cell phone without my access to the documents that I normally would be looking at. I'm sorry.
Understood. No, no worries, understood. Maybe then we delegate this to someone else who won't be complicated because this is large numbers and it can be complicated on the surface. It looks like we're taking out a huge loan. It's not quite that. And this needs to be very clear so that people understand what's happening. So thank you for your attention.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, could we just come back to, um, Mr. McInerney's questions because I, I tried to follow the back and forth and, um, it was very difficult for me to understand. So I'm, I'm going to ask the baseline question again. Why are we doing this through the county? Why are they just not doing, I, I, I'm still a little bit confused. I'm not opposed to it, but I just don't understand, again, why they're just not doing this on, on their own. Why are we doing this?
My understanding, this is Kevin Quinn with, with McCarter in English. Um, they, they originally proposed two, two pathways. One was a project financing, um, with the, the revenues of the project, um, pledged. The second was under this lease structure. Um, based on timing, uh, of the development of the project, they decided, um, because they couldn't do the, the project financing, uh, portion, or not portion, pathway, um, away from them, it, it needed to be done this way, um, through ECIA. Um, they dual tracked it through ECIA. They, they could, um, with slight modifications do, do it on their own. Um, but based on timing and whatnot, um, they, when they flipped to the lease structure, um, they maintained the project through ECIA.
The, the lease, this is Steve Rother again, the lease structure would not have made it eligible for tax exempt financing. The only way that could have been done is through the ECIA. And that of course would keep the interest rates lower.
So, okay, and the, the project itself, was there someone? So it's a student housing project. Did we, was there someone from NJIT at the leadership meeting?
No, no, there was not.
Okay. We have somebody from NJIT with us tonight?
Uh, we did not, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. This is a project that fits into their capital plan. I mean, is it part of their capital plan? Do we know, is it? To have the support of the city?
Uh, it, it apparently has the support of the city, this Steve Rother again, uh, because there were a variety of, of, uh, of decisions that had to be made by the city to, to move this project along in terms of, you know, real estate taxation and other issues. And the city has been involved and has approved them.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. McInerney, did you want to add anything more to?
Yes, I do, thank you, uh, Commissioner Gill. Um, Steve or, or Mr. Quinn, does this, could the advantage of this also be that the way we have this structured through a lease agreement, um, negate the need for NJIT to come up with a 5% down payment, which would approximate 5.5 million? On general obligation bonds that typically you would have to.
I'm not sure I under, you, you mean from a private.
So typically when you go out for general obligation bonds, you have to put a 5% down payment. Seen where the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
To avoid that.
But that, 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 that is not for a project sending up something like this, no.
Yeah, and NJIT doesn't need to do that as well separately, but no.
That's not a requirement.
A reminder, through you, Mr. President.
It's not a requirement for general obligation bonds, put down 5%?
Municipalities and whatnot, NJIT doesn't, isn't under that.
One, one, one second, please. Whatever your speaking, put his name.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Kevin Quinn, uh, McCarter in English. Um, yeah, NJIT does not, um, fall under that category.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, so that would, that would not be, you know, rational for doing this? No.
Not particularly. No.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Gill, you, you good? You satisfied?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I, I think so. I mean, I, I, it's still, I mean, it makes sense. I'm still, obviously it's a big number and, you know, and I, I wish I had a little more understanding of the project itself and why it's so critical, but you know, I'm, I'm inclined to support it and. So we'll go from there.
If I could add something to it as well, uh, just for the freeholder stake, we, we have done these before. Uh, I got the name wrong, but it came to me, Covanta was the Resource Recovery Facility. We did a hundred million dollars with them. Um, we have done other projects, uh, large scales projects and smaller projects, um, where we've utilized the ECIA on many occasions. I think what we need to know primarily is that the county nor the ECIA are making any guarantees that any default of these bonds would revert solely to the liability of NJIT and the county would have no liability whatsoever. And if bond counsel can say yes to that, um, I'm satisfied.
This is Kevin Quinn, that, that's correct, yes.
And, and this is Steve Rother, and I should say that John Drakowitz, who is representing us as the issuer, he has come to the same conclusion. That's his opinion as well.
Well, if John Drakowitz said it's good, it's good enough for me. You can tell John said that.
Yep.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, thank you. That, that's, that's very helpful. That, that helps answer my questions and so I'm, I'm good, Mr. President. Thanks so much.
No, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion, uh, from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Vice President Palmaras. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you much.
Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions two and the added star of resolution two and three. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vazio is going to address item number two.
Good evening, everyone. Before you is our last and final opportunity to make sure that we have sufficient funding in the 2020 budget. The Reserve Transfer Resolution is primarily going to the bulk utilities. One of the items in particular is the correctional services. That is a reclassification of some natural gas bills that were incorrectly charged to their correctional facility cost center and should have been charged to the bulk utilities cost center. So we are just going to correct that. And on top of that, again, it's just housekeeping from the budget standpoint to make sure we have sufficient funding. If there comes late bills, which is, is pretty much standard operating with these utilities. They come in later in the year and especially under the COVID situations, some of these businesses are just getting caught up with some big utility bills. So that's with this Reserve Transfer Resolution. And again, we have until March to present this and we're doing our due diligence and making sure we, we have sufficient funding. And if there's any questions, I will take those.
That was two and three? Did you do two and three? I'm sorry.
I am just doing two.
Okay.
I'll be handling number three, Mr. President. And we do have Ms. Vazio available if there are questions. But this is a contract with American Ramp Systems to provide handicap ramps for polling places on the April 25th through the elections, through April 25th through April 2021 through April 2023 in an amount not to see $43,699. Some of the election facilities that we have do not have adequate ADA access. And this company provides ramps so that voters are able to get into the facilities and vote.
Thank you. Mr. Palovecchio?
I don't have questions on two or three.
Mr. McInerney?
Yeah, I discussed the, the transfers, you know, prior to the meeting. I have no problem with them. I would ask Annette if she could just send me a, a list of the appropriations as of the end of March. I'd like to just see what's left over from the 2020 budget at this point in time.
I will do that, Frank, not a problem.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a question.
I have a question for number.
Commissioner Siebel.
Thank you. I have a question for number three of Linda Von Essie. How many ramp systems do we need to do through the circumstances? Will this be permanent for the future?
Good evening, Mr. President, freeholders and all. We use ramps in about six polling places every election. Most of them are in Newark, one in Nutley. We use older buildings, a lot of the older schools, you know, they have stairs at the entrance going in and out. And in order to make it convenient for the voters, because it's in their neighborhood, we provide ramps for them.
Through you, Mr. President. Put your name and position on the record.
Oh, Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. Linda Von Essie, clerk of the Board of Elections.
Linda, are these new ramps that have to be put in? They weren't there before?
We rent them.
Oh, okay. So this is for rental?
Yes.
For how long?
They're installed to take for election and they're removed two days after every election.
All right, thanks for your answer.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on two and three? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take resolutions two and three as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions four and five, which are from the Division of Youth Services. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Hughes, Warden Barcliff and representatives from the company are here to address this item.
Good evening, Todd Barcliff, Warden, from the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. Here to provide information related to the funding of the education contract at the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. The Essex Regional Educational Service Commission provides educational services to juveniles who are incarcerated at the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. We've requested that Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Guyton from the Essex Region Educational Services Commission speak to any questions that you may have regarding the contract.
Mr. Jenkins or Mr. Guyton are on the call?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President and Commissioners. My name is Rodney Jenkins. I'm the principal of Soldier High School located in the Essex County Youth Detention Center and also an employee of the Essex Regional Educational Services Commission.
Thank you. You want to tell us a little bit about the contract and what's going on?
Okay, the contract that's submitted is the, almost the exact same contract that we have submitted to the county over the past 10 years. There hasn't been an increase in the amount of the funds requested. We have been able to sustain the same level, even better level of education without having layoffs and just being, just being, how can you say, we've been interesting in working with COVID. So we've had to use our resources, you know, very scarcely, but we've been able to do it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Mr. President, so I had a question this when it came on the agenda or came up at the leadership meeting or on the last, last time we discussed it, I can't remember when. You know, when you think about this, this is the contract that starts out in January of 2020 and it's now 2021 and we're, you know, the, you know, the question was why did it take so long? Number one, for the contract to reach the board. Number two is, you know, it's a $1.9 million, which is a considerable amount of money, especially given the fact that the company hasn't been paid anything for the year. And obviously they've incurred costs for that year. And, and so, you know, I, I did have discussions with both these gentlemen prior to the meeting today. And it's my understanding that the, one of the major causes, if not the cause of getting a contract to the county was that they were unable to get certain responsible parties to submit authorization papers that would have sent it to the county for processing and then obviously invoices for payment. So I would just ask if that can be confirmed, that that's one of the major reasons why this was held up?
Kevin Guyton, Administrator, Mr. Jenkins, if I may?
Go right ahead, Mr. Guyton.
Kevin Guyton, Administrator with the Essex Regional Ed Services Commission. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. McInerney is correct. But for the board, I've come to you tonight with no attempt at making excuses for the delayed submission of the services contract. I can assure you at this moment that we will experience no delays going forward. We certainly appreciate the partnership and your faith in our ability to provide educational services to the students assigned to the ECJDC. But again, I don't want to rehash the excuses. There were things that were beyond our control. But certainly, once we were able to get a handle on things and get the unnecessary paperwork to offer a full contract for your review, we did that. But again, this will never happen again. And you can rest assured, I'll take full responsibility for what has taken place thus far.
Mr. McInerney?
So I understand, I understand what Mr. Guyton is saying, but I have to be very honest and, and objective about this. The inability to get somebody to sign off on an authorization in a time where all you have to do is get somebody to come to the office or deliver it to their home or get them to sign it in some way, shape or form seems to me to be a very weak reason why a $1.9 million contract that started in January of 2020 is now coming to the board in March of 2021. I would just, I mean, I, from a business standpoint, to have to put out all of that money and Mr. Guyton did explain that there were reserves available within the company to lay out the money in order to, to finance it for the year, even though no money was on its way in from the county. But I, I suggest that there, you know, is this the tip of the iceberg? I mean, you need to understand that the inability to get somebody to sign a piece of paper on this is, you know, and I, I know Mr. Guyton understands this now and he's, he's, he's made it clear it won't happen again, but, you know, I find that very unusual and very non-businesslike and just very weak reasoning for not getting that contract to the county. Because obviously the county now has to come up with a large payment of 1.9 million retroactive. And the other, the other issue for me was ensure, and I, I did get guarantees and I'll ask that they be put on the record that all of the costs associated with this contract in 2020, based on the fact that there was a lot of issues with regard to the pandemic, that there was no reduction in costs, so that the fact is that, you know, everybody got paid the same amount that they got paid in the prior contract period and that there's no windfall, that, that there's the same amount of contract revenue, but not the same amount of contract cost. And I was assured in the last, just trying to put on the record that the costs were at least equal to last year, if not greater than last, the last contract period. And so there is no, you know, any, any advantage, you know, in terms of the, of cost reduction of, of any kind, that the costs are the same. If you could confirm that, that would be a big part of what I want to get on the record.
Kevin Guyton, Essex Regional Ed Services Commission, response to your question, sir, that is correct. We did not increase expenses.
Okay. Well, of course, you did increase expect, but they weren't any less than the prior contract years. In other words, there's, there was no reduction of cost because of the pandemic.
That is correct. There was no reduction in costs due to the pandemic. The level of staffing remained the same.
Okay. So again, other than, you know, my comments about, you know, the rationale for this, I have nothing else to add to it.
So my question is, was any decrease in the level of service?
Rodney Jenkins, principal, I can say that there was no decrease in service. Other than due to COVID, our teachers couldn't do face-to-face instruction. We went virtual. We added monitors on the pods. And we have some other technological things that are on the works that would make education even easier for our students, whether or not they come down to the school floor or we're sending the education up to the pod.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Palovecchio?
No, I'm not going to add anything. You can, Mr. McInerney, come to the.
Commissioners, questions or comments? All right. Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Vice President Palmaras. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number six, which is the Division of Community Health Services. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, I don't know if we did number five, or we did?
Oh, I thought we took them both together, I'm sorry. That was, okay. So we just did number four? All right, let's go to number five.
And number five, the same gentleman are here to address this item. But before we come to number 2021, which is much more timely submission of a contract and moving ahead to some of the points that Mr. McInerney raised earlier and the commitments you, Mr. President, raised, just as an editorial comment, the administration agrees that what happened in 2020, in 2020 should not have happened. And we actually commend Mr. McInerney for his comments. Actually, we've worked together and agreed with, with his comments. And we're obviously doing better in 2021 because we have it here in March. But I just wanted to say for the record that we've had, this company has provided this service to us for a number of years. And in fact, our academy, our academic institution here has been lauded as probably, is the best in the state. It's a full-time school, has won kudos all over the state, in fact, all over the country for the work that they do. So this definitely was something that was, should not have happened. But I don't want it to detract from their, from the work that they've done to make this a really exemplary educational institution for the facility. So with that, I'll give it to Warden again for, for the 2021 contract.
Good evening, Todd Barcliff, Warden, Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. Here to provide information related to the funding of the education contract at the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. The Essex Regional Educational Service Commission provides educational services to juveniles who are confined at the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center. I'd like to defer all questions to Mr. Guyton and Mr. Jenkins, who are here representing the Essex Regional Educational Service Commission.
All right, who's going?
Mr. Jenkins or Mr. Guyton, please?
Kevin Guyton, Administrator, Essex Regional Ed Services Commission. I believe I'm the only one with you. What I'd like to offer with regard to the current contract, we are currently planning a reopening. That should begin in April this coming month. That should begin in April this coming month, mid-April. So I wanted to make that known, so that certainly the method by which we're offering services will change very shortly. We'll have much more face-to-face time with the students, and that should certainly benefit them. There was a question earlier when I spoke to Mr. McInerney about potential high school graduates. We currently have on track as possible graduates for this June 6th and a possible eight students in total. So further updates will be provided to the ECJDC leadership in the coming future.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Do I have any questions, Mr. President?
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we now have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioners Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number Six, which is from the Division of Community Health Services. Please read it into record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Fishman is here to address this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eileen Fishman, Director of Community Health Services for Essex County. This resolution, we were asked by the state to bring this resolution to the Board of Commissioners to show that we have a memorandum of agreement with a group called Straight and Narrow for the use of our clients who have had multiple DUI offenses, who need additional treatment. In the county, we have an Intoxicator Driver Resource Center where we host 12-hour classes. Those are two days of classes, six hours each, for the purpose of educating and helping an offender to, and to see if they have a more serious problem and to assess them at that time and to get them into treatment. However, if an offender has more than one arrest or offense, then they must go to a 48-hour program, which is done in-house. And Straight and Narrow is the program we use. We refer them there, and they actually make the payments to Straight and Narrow. There is no money that changes hands. It's just a referral agreement for that purpose.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we now have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Seven through Twelve, which are from the Department of Parks. We will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll jump around a little bit with who's on these items, but we'll go through in any order that you said. For Item Seven, Josh Zaitz and Jill Fazio was the new director. She'll introduce herself or going to present these items, this item.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Good evening, Commissioners. Number Seven is an authorization from the Open Space Trust Fund for Design Services for Westside Park Community Center, not to exceed 528,500. Number Seven is related to Number Eight, as Number Seven is the funding for Number Eight. Number Eight is the professional service agreement with Comito Associates to design the project. And I believe Greg Comito is on the line to discuss the project, should the Board have any specific questions.
Hi, it's Greg Comito. I'm on the phone.
Want to tell us a little bit about what it is you're doing?
Certainly. Yes, sir. So we've been asked to provide design services for the Westside Park Community Center, which involves a partial demolition of some derelict pieces or portions of that structure, but to retain the existing gymnasium building and bathrooms and other accessory spaces that were renovated by the county earlier. I'm sorry, I have a little bit of laryngitis. In addition to that, we are going to provide a new construction area in addition that would have a large multipurpose room, primarily for the function of senior activities. That would also provide for a large commercial kitchen, part of a food program, two classrooms, one is a computer IT laboratory of sorts, and two smaller staff offices. And there's just, in addition to lobby and common areas, linking that all together. There's going to be some site work involved. If you're familiar with the park, we're going to be relocating the tennis courts to another area of the park, but also provide parking, which is sorely lacking up there. So introducing parking, we're going to relocate two basketball courts to a portion on the other side of proposed parking. That site's also going to provide a covered drop-off for citizens and the van that brings those seniors. So that's sort of the overview of the project.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Mr. President, would you like to move on to number nine?
Yes, let's move.
Okay. Sure. Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number Nine and Ten similarly are related. Number Nine is the funding mechanism for Number Ten. Number Nine is the authorization to use the Open Space Trust Fund in the amount of $248,000 for design services for the Turtleback Zoo Asian Exhibit. And we invited our new zoo director, Jillian Fazio, to call in, just introduce herself. And then after she's finished, I believe we have Mike Pigga on the line to discuss in detail Number Ten.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? This is Jillian Fazio. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you guys. Before you do that, I want to recognize Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This is Jillian Fazio, Director of Essex County Turtleback Zoo. I am excited this evening to discuss with you an upcoming project. We are looking for design services from Comito to create some new habitats that are going to replace existing exhibits that are currently inadequate and deteriorating. These new exhibits will house clouded leopards, red pandas, hornbill species, and to meet our guests' expectations, an Asian turtle as well. Hopefully, they will provide exceptional animal exhibits that will elevate both our animal welfare goals and our guest experience. That's kind of my summary.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Joshua Zaitz again from Parks. I believe Mike Pigga from French Corillo, the organizations going to be designing the project is also involved.
Sure, let's hear from.
Mr. President, he may have to unmute.
If he can't join, Mr. President, you just move on.
Okay, let's move on.
Sure. Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number Eleven is a contract award to GPC Inc. to provide interior/exterior services. This is a 24-month contract extension, not to exceed $154,125. Simply put, this is a painting contract that the Parks Department has to paint various buildings throughout the county. I'm sorry, throughout the park system. On tap, within the next several months, we're going to be painting the outside of the Brentford Park Garage. And one of the big things we want to tackle is some of the older senior buildings throughout the park system to paint those as well. And Number Twelve is a contract award to the two lowest responsible bidders for ice and snow removal. This is a 24-month contract extension, not to exceed $702,130,000. Specifically, this is to two vendors. One is rut services, the other is VIP special services. There's a total of five different zones throughout the county. Rut services is a low bidder for three of the zones, and VIP is a low bidder for two of the zones. Again, this is an extension. The rut service, the amount not to exceed, for their contract would be $365,200. And VIP, their zones, would be $336,930, a total of $702,130. This is for the exterior pathways of the parks, specifically the sidewalks that patrons would walk on and children and whatnot would be picking up school buses or buses or what have you. Happy to answer. Any questions, the Board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have two questions on Seven through Ten. Josh, we're seeking authorization to use the Open Space Trust Fund to fund the design services for these two projects. Are both of those design services going to be fully funded through trust fund? Or are there any additional funds that need to be used?
Sure. Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, here, Mr. President. The entirety of both of the design service contracts will be coming from the Recreation Open Space Trust Fund.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
For Resolutions Eight and Ten, those are the design costs. Are there any estimates of what the total construction cost would be on these projects, on both those projects?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. Currently, we do not have a design estimate. You know, the design has not started yet. But historically, in order to gauge the most competitive price, we don't like to discuss cost estimates before their bid due to getting the best price possible.
All right. Well, then you can provide those to the Board, maybe privately, if you don't mind.
Certainly. We will reach out to Public Works and get those for you.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Siebel?
At the March 4th Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board meeting, we discussed Seven through Ten extensively. And I'm very happy that two great companies are going to be taking care of this. We have Comito and French Corillo, and they've done some wonderful work for the county in the past. And I'm looking forward to what they're going to accomplish this time. And the advisory board was very, very pleased with what is going to come to fruition. So thank you very much. It was discussed extensively.
Thank you, Commissioner Siebel. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here we now have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Take Seven through Twelve as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please be reminded, we will conduct the public comment session for the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Madam Clerk, can you give them the call-in information?
Yes, Mr. President. If you're calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. Repeat, 855-756-7520, and use the password 72191Pound. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. That is the information you requested, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Thirteen through Sixteen, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Antonio will address these items. I don't know what's going on tonight. Mr. Antonio?
Mr. President, if I may just for a second?
Yes, Vice President Pumarres?
I'm not sure. I don't think this is the problem for everybody, but maybe we should remind people not to be listening in on social media or to the live feed because there is a delay. And maybe those callers on the phone should just be listening through what's going on on the phone because I think that maybe have contributed some of the issues we had earlier on tonight. Thank you.
Vice President?
Mr. President, I can do Fourteen. This is Julius Cultry, Purchasing Agent.
You can do what?
Number Fourteen, sir.
But we're on Thirteen.
I'm sorry, Thirteen. Thirteen is a contract with Kevin Dowd's Tree Service. Category A was $290,000. Category B was $7,650. Category C is $1,350. And we had three bidders, and they were the lowest responsible bidder, not to exceed $150,000. It's a 24-month agreement, including tree trimming, removal, and stump grinding. It's open-ended as needed.
Mr. President, quick question.
Mr. Polavecchio?
Yeah. Mr. Cultry?
Yes.
I have an outdated copy of my agenda. I have an award to Rich Tree Service. Did you say Dowd? Kevin Dowd?
No. Kevin Dowd's Tree Service.
The agenda says Rich Tree Service. We have different.
It sounds like Mr. Antonio is on, correct?
Yes, I can, yeah, I can. I had to recall in. I can apologize for that.
Okay, just hold on one second, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Polavecchio, was that the end of your inquiry?
Mr. President, Mr. Polavecchio is correct. I didn't, that's my other page.
Okay, so we're, let me just be clear. You're giving the wrong information.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, just checking. All right. All right, so Mr. Antonio?
Let's go to a reliable source, Mr. Antonio.
Yes.
Item Number Fourteen?
Yes.
Thirteen.
Okay, so, this is David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number Fourteen is a contract change order to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for providing vehicle wash and diesel services, both North and East and South and West regions of the county. This will add an additional $12,000 to the existing contract. Item Number Fifteen is a contract award to Shoggo Property Services, to provide snow and ice removal services at various county buildings. Some of the locations that historically Some of the locations that historically are actually performed by Sugar as part of handwork during snow and ice events are places like the DPW Building in Verona, the DPW Building in Zero Grove, 50 South Clinton, and the parking lot, the Juvenile Detention Center, 320 and 321 University Avenue, as well as the Sheriff's Patrol Headquarters. This is a two-year agreement not to exceed $950,000. And item number 16 is actually a revenue generator. It's not something the county pays for. It is an extension to the contract with Klein Recycling for the purchase and removal of various types of scrap metal at our county Public Works facility. Klein provides the containers. Klein comes and removes the containers and at the same time helps us properly dispose of metals like copper, steel, iron, aluminum, things of that sort. And the county actually gets paid for that based on the agreement. And that concludes these items. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had trouble, it wouldn't unmute. I have a question about number 13, because it wasn't clear about that. There was some kind of confusion about which tree for service was going to be.
Mr. Antonio, you want to go back and give us the correct information on number 13 or 14?
Certainly, Mr. President. Certainly. Again, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 13 is a bid received. There were three vendors that responded. The lowest responsible bidder was actually Rich Tree Services. They will be performing tree trimming. They will perform removal of trees and grinding of stumps based on, it's unopened in the contract, and it's all based on a need.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. No questions? I have a mover. I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares to take Resolutions 13 through 16 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I would ask to mute their mic, or I'm going to ask our technician to mute that mic. Thank you. Roll call as you required, requested, Mr. President. I will begin with Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 17, which is from the Department of Corrections, and we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as you stated, this is from the Department of Corrections. It's to provide Glockbray of firearms, holsters, parts, and accessories for our Corrections Department under New Jersey State contract, an amount not to exceed $5,526, coming from operating funds, and this vendor complies with the board's 2015 responsibility ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion for Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, we'll move to Resolutions 18 through 32, which are all commendations and in memoriam. We'll read them into the record at a later time. I just want to briefly touch on Resolution number 32, which I thought was very important from the board as a whole. And at this point, please turn your attention to Resolution number 32. This resolution is being sponsored by Acclamation, and I thank my colleagues on this board for supporting me in this legislation, offering condolences to the families of the victims who were murdered during the shootings in Atlanta, Georgia. And then, not even one week later, another shooting in Boulder, Colorado, leaving 18 people dead. As a board, we want the public to know that we are appalled by these acts of violence, and this resolution is a small act to let people know that we will continue to be vocal and vigilant in these matters. We also support federal government leaders who are calling for action on these issues. We will keep those families and communities in our prayers. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Sebo.
Mr. President, it's an excellent, excellent resolution. Just last night, I had the opportunity to attend a vigil here in Livingston when hundreds of people came out to protest what has happened. And I think this is an excellent idea to have this resolution. It's not going to stop what has happened, but we have to continue to work for the future for it to end. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson. And please, everyone, please, for the listening audience, go on the commissioner's website, and if you haven't already, pull it up, take a look at it. Want you to be familiar with it, you know, what we're talking about and our response. Like Commissioner Sebo said, it's a small token, it's not going to stop anything, but we need to bring awareness to this issue. I know it's all over the news, but we want each and every one of you out there to know that we are concerned with this issue. And we have to do something. We have to do something. So thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take Resolutions 18 through 32 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any other added starters?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, let's move to report of board committees. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? The legislative reports? Any written communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? All right, let's go to public comment. Madam Clerk, we're going to move to public comment on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk.
Okay. If you're calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. Use the password 72191 pound. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the caller so they can state their comment or question, and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Chaloma Lumba, our public information officer, will begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chaloma Lumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have one email for public comment. This is from Jeffrey Feld, Esquire of Short Hills, New Jersey. Mr. Feld submitted his non-agenda items and comments and questions via letter. One, how many consecutive meeting absences before a commissioner is deemed to have abandoned or vacated his or her elected position? Two, do elected officials and other public officials have an affirmative duty to report official misconduct and other abuses of up the chain of command? Three, do commissioners have an affirmative duty to ensure that the county discloses and collects all long-term tax exemption revenues due to the county? Four, the non-urban renewal entity NJHMFA Section 37 Long-Term Tax Exemption repeal and replaced effective April the 17th, 1992? Five, from whom have the commissioners received a written legal opinion or memorandum regarding the validity of all post-April 17th, 1992 non-urban renewal entity NJHMFA Section 37 Long-Term Tax Exemptions under the state law? Mr. President, that concludes our public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll order comment session. Commissioners, I mean, commission comment session. Do we have any comments you would like to make at this time, commissioners?
Mr. President, I just have one quick statement.
Commissioner Vice President.
Thank you. Just a reminder that tomorrow's Essex County Emergency Food Drive will take place at Hendrix Field in Belleville. We encourage you to share the news for people who are in need of assistance or are in a position to help those who need assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Stay safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Everyone, good to see everybody.